We're ready to go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 4th, 2024 Tumwater City Council Meeting. Again, just for everyone who's watching, this is on a Monday. We always have our council meeting in November on a Monday, so we are free for the election evening. So with that, first, we will do roll call.
Councilmember Liata Dahoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Please excuse us, evening.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthell.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Altazar.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present. Join me for a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple special items this evening. The first one is a proclamation for American Indian Heritage Month, November 2024, and Councilmember Agabi will be reading that.
Proclamation. Whereas November is officially recognized month to celebrate and commemorate the heritage of American Indians, it is a time to honor the contributions, achievements, and sacrifices of America's forced people, and a time to learn and celebrate the rich cultural and historic legacy of Native people. And whereas Native Americans have inhabited the area now known as Washington State since time immemorial today, 29th federal recognized Indian tribe out of state tribe which strictly reserve right and other tribal communities reside in Washington. And whereas Tumwater Falls, where the Deschutes River enters Bort Inlet was a ceremony and sacrifice and sacred site of the Stachas people, ancestors of today's Sashquen Island tribe, the village on Bort Inlet below the falls and the river itself were both named Stachas. The Stachas fish and gather seafood on Bort Inlet and nearby waterways, and the area was a gathering place for the Stachas and nearby related tribes, including the Sashquen, the Sashquen, the Squawly, the Hales, and many others, Salish, Sioux tribes, and indigenous people. And whereas, as a forced people to live on the land we all cherish, Native Americans have profoundly shaped our country's character and our cultural heritage. Native people are leaders in every aspect of society. Their contributions and values have shaped the society, political, environmental, and economic fabric of our community, while also enriching freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas, we renew our commitment to respecting each tribe's sovereignty and cultural identity, while ensuring equal opportunity for all, and continue to work to strengthen our government-to-government relationship. May therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, hereby proclaim the month of November 2024, American Indian Heritage Month, and encourage people to celebrate the rich cultures of indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native people face historically and in the present, and recognize their continuous significance in our community. Signed in the City of Tumwater, Washington, and recognized on this fourth day of November in the year 2024.
Thank you. We have several members of the Squawson Tribe Council and members, and I will invite you to the podium. I will give you the proclamation, and if you want to say a few words, that would be great. I want to thank you for everything you do and the support of the community. And just as a small token of my thanks, I would like to present you with a pen. Did you have another member? Yeah. She's busy right at the moment. Yeah, so.
Thanks, appreciate you.
Yeah. All right, if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, I think maybe some of us might want to say a few words. I'll just. The Hacks La Hill, Twagalaput, Tiiap, Tiiyeshed, Mayor Sullivan, City Council, Klopshtitsa, Chris Peters, Klopshtitsa, Squawxidubtsched, good day to all of you honorable people. Mayor Sullivan, City Council. My name is Klopsch. My English name is Chris Peters, and I am Squawson. And this is very meaningful. These things mean a lot to us as indigenous people. And this is significant coming from you all. The first colonized settlement of the state of Washington and the first peoples of the state of Washington from this area, you know, we've come a long ways over the last few years, both as partners and as friends. And that means a lot to us as indigenous, as Squawson people. We really care about the health and well-being of this community. We care about the health and well-being of your land, your water, the sacred Deschutes River that flows through here. We care about the health and well-being of your diverse economy and your children, your schools, your housing, and your businesses, and this governance that you are running is so meaningful to us because we know that moving forward, we have to come together. And we know that we as indigenous people and our indigenous values and proclamations like this, showing and furthering diversity is not just good for Squawson people and indigenous people. We feel like it's good for everyone in the community. It's good for all the citizens of Tumwater. And so for that gesture of gratitude, we raise our hands to all of you. Let's say, Esquoditsich is grateful to all of you and how it tubes to love. Thank you to each and every one of you and appreciate your time. Allow us some time for other council members to say a few words.
Hacks La Hill, Twagalaput, Twagalaput, Galaput, Tiiyeshed, Jeremy Walls, Klopshtitsa, Squawxidubtsched. Good day to all of you. Mayor Sullivan, Council. My name is Jeremy Walls, and I have the honor to serve the Squawson Island Tribe as our council number one. And I just want to say it's an honor to be here today, to accept this proclamation. Not only have you done us a solid, but you've created a safe place for all Native Americans, indigenous people here in this beautiful city of ours to share and come. And so that there means so much to me that you've been fighting and you're going to create this space. So I raise my hands up to all of you for doing that. And I thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Just a few minutes here. Jim Peters, tribal council secretary. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here in front of you and the guests here. One of the things I'd like to remind people in our tradition in an event like this is that you all have a responsibility. That responsibility is to take what you learned today and what you heard in the speakers, my nephew, the chairman, and my cousin, Jeremy, what they just said, and then any of the other council members that come. Take that back home. Tell your friends, tell your family what you heard and what you witnessed here today. And then they will then, your kids possibly, or your family members will go and tell their family or their friends, their coworkers, what you had witnessed here. And that's how our oral history gets passed down through individuals and generations. And then I'm honored that you recognize this today in this month. And we have family members, we have tribal members that work in your communities, live in your communities, go to the schools here. And it's been a, I've been around for a long time on tribal council and stuff. And we've always had a connection with Tumwater and Olympia and Lacey. Unfortunately, this is actually the first time I've ever been in the city council chambers. I've been in the two other cities, so this is a beautiful place that you guys have created, and it feels good. I had a good feeling walking into the doors here tonight. So thank you very much.
My name is Joshua Whitner. I'm the council treasurer for Squawson, and most of it's all been said, but I'll just say again, we really appreciate all this. I have family members. My sister lives here in Tumwater. We have a lot of family here. And making this effort to show, you know, the connection, show how much you appreciate our heritage, acknowledging us, it really does mean a lot to our people. So just want to, again, raise our hands to you. Thank you.
Oh, CM, this is Lucy Tista over here. My name is Jamie Cruz. I'm the vice chairwoman of the Squawson Island Tribe. And with me, I brought my niece Evelyn Christ Lion, my daughter Hazel Lehman, my daughter Angeline, and my nephew Walter. Like Jim said, we're kind of, it's the oral history. So what is it that they're going to remember today, that they're going to tell my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren? And so even though we came in like a bat out of hell, they're here and they're going to remember that. So we just want to raise our hands to you, that traditional way of like saying thank you. And that we have been here since time immemorial, and we will continue to be here because we, not just because of we're resilient, but because we bring in our young ones like this, and we stand them up to say, hey, this is how you're Squawson. They said, what are we going to go do? So we're going to go pray to Creator and be Squawson today. You know, because how else do I tell them? We're just going here to be honored, not just because it's Native American Heritage Month. You all come to the table, and we sit next to you equally. And so in my short time here as council, and with many of my mentors standing behind me, I'm honored to be here today. And I really appreciate you guys letting us come in like a bat out of hell because it is difficult. But we're here, and I appreciate, and I just want to express my gratitude and just encourage everyone to be a good relative, not just in November, but every day you can be a good relative. So what does that mean? Helping an elder, picking up some trash, or telling someone who looks sad, hey, I hope you feel better or something. Because oftentimes we say, how are you doing? We say, okay, oh, move along. No, sit there. You take that time. And we live in this world of a fast pace. I tell my kids, all right, hustle, hustle. But it's okay to take that time to slow down and say, what are our intentions here? What is, what's our purpose? What are we going to do for not just today and tomorrow, but for the next decade and decade and centuries? So with that, I'll leave you all in that way, and we're going to take that home in our beautiful pens. We all have pens. So, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
We actually have a three-day work session up north, and we're driving up tonight.
Thank you for taking the time. Thank you. All right. This evening, we have another proclamation for National Veteran and Military Families Month, and Councilmember Jefferson will read that. Hold on one second.
A retired Army veteran. I'm really honored to read this. Proclamation. Whereas Tumwater honors the strength and sacrifices of our veterans and active military members whose service is essential to our national security and freedom and the families, caregivers, and survivors of veterans during the month of November. And whereas November is a time to acknowledge the tremendous sacrifices our veterans and family members make, Washington is home to more than 517,000 veterans, 65,000 active-duty military, 17,000 National Guards and Reserves, and their supportive families. And whereas our veterans and service members are brave and selfless individuals who respond when duty is called, their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals of which the United States is founded are both necessary and inspiring. To be a service member and a veteran is to have endured and survived challenges most Americans will never know. And whereas to be a military family is to sacrifice more for our country than most Americans will ever give, military families endure separation from all their loved ones and adjust to new living situations with short notice and as frequently as every two to three years. And whereas there are currently 1.2 million military children of active-duty members worldwide, and nearly 80% of military children attend public schools throughout the U.S., Washington State educators currently work with 32,000 military families and have to know how to help kids cope with stress, deployment of their parents, the impact of grief and loss, discuss violence, terrorism, and war, and the anticipation for their loved ones returning home. And whereas, support from military families sustain our fighting force and strengthens the health, security, and safety of our community. So therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, hereby proclaim the month, November 2024, National Veterans and Military Families Month. And she encourages people to join me in recognizing and supporting our veterans and military families who embody strength, resilience, courage, and whose experiences enrich our community. Signed in the City of Tumwater, Washington, and recognized on this fourth day of November in the year 2024. Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. The individuals to receive this were not able to attend, so I will make sure that they get that. I will probably be stopping by their office later on this week. So now we will go to public comment, and this is for any item that is not on the public hearing schedule. So I will, do we have anyone online registered? No one online? All right, for public comment, and again, this is not for any of the public hearings this evening. So I will, first person is Pamela Hanson. If you come to the microphone, three minutes, and state your name and address.
Thank you. I don't think I'll take the full three minutes. Pamela Hanson, post office box 14521, Tumwater, Washington. First thing, election night tomorrow night, I know that was mentioned. Thurston Community Media, Channel 22 on Xfinity Comcast, is having live broadcasts, last I heard. So from 7:30 to 9:30 is when I'm volunteering, and it's quite an event when the TV station goes live. So if you want to tune in there from any other channel, that would be great. And then Council Considerations 8A, I'm going to skip to that, which is the fee schedule. And there's quite a bit of information. It starts on page 109, I believe, and goes to 150. So there's a lot, there's duplication because one has the highlighted, which it shows the fee changes, which cannot be covered in, even in three minutes, if I were to solely talk about that. There's a lot of fee changes. So on a budget night, it would have been nice for it to be advertised because we're talking from the summary page. On page 151, it looks like Tumwater is being brought into line with Lacey and Olympia, which is quite an increase. So we're talking, and I didn't highlight these, I'm just going to go down the list. Water, sanitary sewer, which is city, sanitary sewer lots, storm drain, subtotal utility tax, and then total bill. So there, it goes from 12904, that's the total column, to 14355. So an increase of $14.51 of that whole column. So how does that translate? I think there needs to be a bigger discussion and more feedback. So I'm disappointed that that is not, that does not have a, that resolution does not have a public hearing. Over 50 pages with a summary with charts. But I would like to hear justification on why we're being brought into line with the increase or the level of Olympia and Lacey. Why? What's it going to go for? And then as far as 6E on the consent calendar, 93rd Avenue interchange study. The only comment I have on that is, I'm going to try and pull it out. So it goes from, it looks like Flying J to Pilot on the other side of the I-5 interchange. I kind of remember the water problem on putting the fuel stations right there next to I-5 and the sensitivity of the water. And so one last sentence, I apologize. Right across from Flying J, just a little bit of rain causes standing water. That piece of property was transferred in ownership, I believe, to the tribe. So I hope in the study, consideration can be given to what may have caused, if there is any. I don't have the background. I have no idea, but just please consider any of the construction around it and what impact it may have had on their property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the other members who signed up were part of the Squawson Island Tribe who are here. And so, and another council, another member of the audience, cross your name out. Do you want to speak to public comment? Dave Nekandry? Well, you had it written down, and then you crossed it out. So I just want to verify that you really meant to do that.
Well, I do want to testify on the budget. I didn't, I'll speak to that in more detail later. But I just, since I'm here and since I've got the opportunity, I just want to congratulate the city on the seeming completion of the Israel Road Project. Been a long time coming. I can tell you, my wife, who almost habituates at the library, is very grateful. We just got to work on the lights down at Tumwater Valley Driving Range next, and she'll be a perfectly happy citizen or nearly so of the city of Tumwater. It's not as much fun as the circles on Trosper Road, but it's a nice project. I just want to give the city and the staff a tip of the hat. It's nice to have that improved.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else who's not on the list want to do public comment? All right. With that, we will now move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Altazar, seconded by Councilmember Dahoff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, now we are moving into the public hearing portion. The first one is on ordinance number O2024-007. It's the 2025 to 2026 proposed budget. And our finance director, Troy Neymeyer, is going to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am Troy Neymeyer, Finance Director. And we have a short presentation before we open the public hearing for the 2025-2026 budget. So we'll start with our journey thus far. As always, a budget starts with the council retreat, and we held that January through March of this year. And that's where the council gets together to review priorities and goals, make plans for the next biennium. And then the finance, excuse me, finance department gets to work doing forecasts and projections. Staff in various departments start doing budgeting and planning work. We use, as you know, a different approach this year, a first-team approach where all of the directors got to see what every other department was asking for. We always make sure that budget requests tie to budget and council goals and priorities. Earlier this, later in the spring and early summer, we had four municipal finance 201 presentations. We did, as we worked through it, and we'll go into this a little more later, we did additional planning and some reductions to the original budget amounts. Finally came out with the mayor's proposed budget a few weeks ago. And before we're done, we will have done three budget workshops and two public hearings before adopting the final budget. Some of the challenges as we moved into this budget, we've had years of growth and increasing population, which increases demands for public service. We've also had high inflation the last couple of years, which we all know about, and we've all felt the pinch of that inflation for the city. That hits us everywhere from staff costs to the cost of repaving a road or building a roundabout. Revenue growth, we've, of course, we talk about this a lot, and we'll talk about it more tonight. We have the 1% property tax limit, which does not allow us to keep up when we have periods of high inflation. And then on the staff side, we've had some turnover and burnout, especially with nonrepresented staff salaries, and in some cases, not enough staff. So moving to the property tax, the blue line on the bottom represents the 1% annual property tax increase that the city is allowed to do. Previous to that, previous in the early 2000s, as you'll remember, there was a citizen initiative to limit property tax to 1% growth each year. If that had not taken effect, cities used to be able to increase property tax annually by as much as 6%. Not to say it was 6% every year, but it was usually tied to inflation. And so that's the gray line on the top. So that shows where the city could have been on just inflationary increases. The yellow line on this graph shows what the city actually collected, and that's thanks to the new construction. That's thanks to the growth we've had in the city, and that's been a lifeline because, as you can see, it's much more than just the 1%. However, even with that, it doesn't allow us to keep up when inflation hits 6, 7, 8, 9%. So some of the priorities going into the budget were to increase nonrepresented salaries to a more competitive level, ask for additional staffing, look at additional space and security at City Hall, and deferred building maintenance. We'll go into each of these a little bit. For the nonrepresented wages, we found that our wages were not competitive, which resulted in high turnover, unfilled positions, and fewer applicants for open positions. There are several instances, especially with engineering and community development, where we would make an offer to the best candidate, often at the top of the salary range, and they would reject the offer because they got a better offer at another city or a county. So that's something we definitely want to fix. I'm going to forward to the next slide, and I'll come back. This is a graph that you've seen before, council. This is just a very simple cost of living increase between the different work groups at the city. This does not include special pays, overtime, assignment pays, and that kind of thing, just straight colas. So the top line is the police guild in the gray there. Below that is, is police. Oh, oops. I did that wrong, so I'm sorry. Top line is fire. Next line down is police. The yellow line is the Teamsters, and the bottom blue line is the non-rep salary folks. And so this is part of what we're looking to address to make us more competitive. Okay, back to this one on the right-hand side. One of the other priorities was additional staff. We've had a lot of growth in the residents of Tumwater, but we haven't had a lot of growth at the city staffing-wise. More people means more demand for services, and in some cases, like new building code standards coming up for community development, some unfunded mandates. Continuing with the priorities, we've got a lot of deferred maintenance. The buildings shown here on the left are just a few examples of city-owned buildings that we've had for a long time that need new siding or a new roof or new upgrades on the interior of the building that haven't been done for a long time. And then on the right-hand side, with the growth of the city and anticipated growth for staff and continued growth, we need more room somewhere. City Hall would be preferable, but we're kind of busting at the seams right now. So, for example, in the next biennium, as we implement body-worn cameras, we don't have room for staff as it sits right now, so we need to create some. And then a couple of years ago, we had a Homeland Security audit really related to the water system, but they also went through City Hall and made recommendations for security enhancements at City Hall as well. So this slide, if you were at the budget workshop two weeks ago, we had this, and if you direct your attention to the bottom, the, at that time, the expenditures outweighed revenues to the tune of $10.2 million. We told you at that time we would continue to work on this, and we have. So you'll see on the right, on the bottom, in that two weeks, we've brought that down to $6.8 million. That would mean using reserves to balance the budget. We are in a good position with reserves, but we'd still like to get it a little bit lower than that. We're hoping closer to $5 million. So we are going to continue to work, and we will see you in just over a week at the next budget workshop. This is to demonstrate the overall need we identified through the budget process. When we identified all the needs of the city, put them all together, it came out to about $30 million more in needs than we had in revenue. That was an unacceptable budget to bring forth, so we went back to the drawing board, narrowed that down, and we got it down to 20 million. That was still an unacceptable level for the budget, so we went back to work again, got it down to $10.2 million. we went back to work again, got it down to $10.2 million, which was what came out in the mayor's proposed budget. And as I mentioned tonight, we're down to $6.8 million at the moment. Some of the big items in the budget that might be of interest to you. We have the body-worn cameras for the police department. Across the top, that shows the new positions that it'll take to implement those. And then on the bottom portion, the cost of the new people for 2025 and 2026. And then on the far right, for the entire biennium, the increased wages to the guild members for wearing the cameras, and then the hardware cost for a grand total of a little over $1.1 million. The new Medic One unit. This is a program where Medic One looked at all the fire stations in the county. They, they have a need due to the growth in population to add another medic unit. They ran a lot of scenarios and data, and decided that Station T2 here in Tumwater would be the ideal place for that medic unit. So this is in process. Across the next biennium, the total expenditure cost of that is $2.5 million, with revenue reimbursements from Medic One at about $2 million. So the net increased cost of the city's general fund is about $512,000. Moving on to general fund revenue, this slide is interesting to me because, and hopefully to everybody, sales tax and property tax for some time now have been the two largest revenues. That's the blue and the gray, if that's hard to read. For a long time, those have been the two largest sources of revenue for the city's general fund. This time, in this, in this next two-year budget, for the first time, sales tax is going to be larger than property tax. And that is what we're seeing there is the long-term effect of the 1% property tax cap. And so the property tax just can't grow as fast as sales tax or other sources can. And so sales tax will now be our largest source of revenue, which is great. We will take all the sales tax we can get. Please spend money in Tumwater. It is more volatile. If there's ups and downs in the economy, it fluctuates more, whereas property tax is very level. That's why it's nice to have a nice property tax base.
Hold on one moment, Councilmember Jefferson. Okay, go ahead.
So, sales tax is everyone. Property tax is just for those who own property. Is it up to the state to raise the sale tax, or can Tumwater raise the sales tax?
We have some, some limited ability to raise sales tax. We, we don't have unlimited ability, but we, that is one of the tools that's available to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then to close this graph out, we have the BNO tax in the yellow and intergovernmental contracts and grants in the, in the large blue one there. Moving to expenditures, salaries and benefits are by far the largest expenditure portion of the budget. That's our people, followed by other charges and services. And then by department, police and fire are nearly 50% of the budget, about, I think it was 47.4% in the yellow and the pink there, followed by parks at 12.9% and transportation and engineering at 10.4. And this is the graph we refer, we refer to as the fiscal cliff. It is not an actual cliff. It's more of a performance measure. So we'll go through that here for a second. The revenue and expenditure forecasts, some history and some forecast are on the top. The red line is, are the expenditures. Blue line is the revenue. And in part, due to that property tax limit, that just creates a structural deficit where over time, revenues can't keep up with expenditures. The gray line at the bottom and the yellow line, the gray line is the ending fund balance, and the yellow line is the minimum required fund balance. So the minimum number of reserves, minimum, minimum number for the reserves that we need. Where those lines intersect in 2028 is what we've referred to as the cliff. So our job is, at the city, is to monitor that very closely and make smart investments in our future so that we can continue to kick that intersecting line out further into the future. When we did this, the current budget, two years ago, in 2022, that intersection was in 2026. So we have successfully moved that out an additional two years, and we will continue to work on that. Okay, in the budget, the business-type funds are our utilities, water, sewer, storm, and the golf course. Capital project funds, we've got the governmental CFP and transportation CFP. And then the overall budget summary, this is not all of our funds, if you add those up, but these are some of the larger, more significant funds. And then the total expenditure budget for this budget so far is $428 million. That does include ending reserves, so it's not all expenditures. And our next steps, tonight, we will have the first public hearing in the budget process. On November 12th, we will have another budget workshop. Everyone is welcome to join us for that. On November 19th, we will have another public hearing for the budget. Adoption is allowed at that meeting, or we can adopt on December 3rd. So for that, Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to you for the public hearing.
All right. Is there any questions before I open up for the public comment? Councilmembers worth that?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that at one point we were $10.2 million over, and now we have it down to 6.8, taking 3.4 million out. So how does that, where would we see that reflected? Because I'm looking at the original paper document, and then also the one from our website. Will that be updated to show where deductions have been taken? Or how, how is that reflected?
Yes, when we, we'll, we'll go into more detail on that at the next budget workshop, as far as what's the, the kind of things we're pulling back. And then after we adopt a budget, we will put all of that detail together in written form as well.
Okay, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, so here's my question is, maybe it's for Karen, our city attorney. How can we have a budget, a public hearing on the budget when we have not been presented a budget?
There, we have been presented a budget. It's, it's on the website. It's been in
The 63-page document is the budget?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. The question I have is, when I see 100% increase in a utility tax, my first thing is, what problems are we trying to solve? So I'm used to seeing a budget where it has each department and everything penciling out, right? So there's increases. So is this, are these increases because of inflation, because of projects, staffing? I'm not able to see any of that. So what was given to us, that 63-page document, is not sufficient for me to understand the budget, because I need to see a budget. So that's what, what am I missing? I guess that's my question.
Thank you. So our intent is to bring you back additional information at the budget workshop next week, and then to provide similar information to what you've had before, prior to the public, the final public hearing. The documents that we are actually officially adopting are the first, I think it's the three or four pages of the document that you got a couple of weeks ago. And then the detail after that is the information that talks about expenses by fund and by department.
So I guess my, for me, I need more time. I'm used to the budget coming out in July, August, and spending multiple hours talking about the programs and the priorities and how, where everything is as a council. So for me, getting it at the next meeting is not enough time for me to review, because I am, my background chemistry, I like, I need to see the numbers to understand what the problem is and what problems we're trying to solve. And what's been presented does not answer those questions for me.
So it's my understanding that we're generally following the same format that has been followed in previous years. We are a little bit later. I, I admit that. We have been working to transition from one ERP system to another, which has created some difficulties. It's created some efficiencies in terms of how we are able to track finances, but it's also created some challenges in terms of how we did our budgeting this, this year, in terms of just the logistics of input. But in terms of the timeline, or, excuse me, in terms of the steps in the process, it is similar to what we've utilized before. One of the changes that is of necessity, the way we've, from last time, is you used to get a binder that had all the schedules in it.
That's what I need.
We have all those schedules, and we can provide those to you. Those schedules reflect the $10.2 million deficit. So we haven't, the, the thought was, it takes a lot of work on the part of staff to compile and approve, to approve and compile, and then print all of that information for you. So instead of doing that, as we were still trying to find ways to create savings and not have to dip into our ending fund balances much, that we would wait to do that until we have been able to find all of those savings, and then be able to give you more accurate information that doesn't end up giving you a, a three-inch stack of papers three different times.
The challenge I have is we have a public hearing, and there's no budget for the public or me to review and follow up on, and see and check, and prioritize and support. That's the challenge I have. We're in November, so I would ask that we don't vote on the budget in November, because I need more time, and there's nothing for the community to respond to. When I see the utility tax increase of 100%, I have not seen what the problem is, what we're trying to solve, and how that equates that number, how that equates to 100% increase. That's what I'm missing.
So I think-
We're going to actually talk about that more tonight when we talk about the fee resolution. We've, we did talk about that last week at the budget workshop. We talked about it at Public Works. We're going to bring it here again tonight.
Thank you.
Specifically, the utility tax.
Right. What was explained in the last meeting was that it's a 100% increase. I need to see the numbers. I'm going to channel Angela right now, of what it is now, what the need is, what problem we're trying to solve, and why that equates to 100% increase in the utility tax. Because I'm not seeing that, and I'm not in support of that. So that's the challenge. I want to support the budget and move forward together, but I need to see what problem we're trying to solve, and what that equates to, and why it's 100% increase in the utility tax. That's the challenge where I'm at today. But this is helping me. But I need to see that for me to be in support of that, so I can explain to constituents why your utility tax is being proposed at 100% increase.
I see what, I see what you're saying with the 100% increase, and it depends on how you want to slice and dice the numbers. It's, it's going from 6%, the, the proposal is going from a 6% utility tax increase to a 12% utility tax increase. So it's, you could, I get what you're saying. If it's 100%, you could also say it's a 6% increase, because that's, that's really what it is.
Right.
But I-
I get you. Any increase, I need to be able to explain to my neighbors why their rates are going up, and what that equates to. What are they getting?
Yeah.
I'm just channeling the regional fire theory, which still pains me. The messaging in the current state of why we are asking for what we're asking for. We could have done better, obviously, and we failed. So for this, that's why I want to avoid those unintended consequences of people going, what, what, what? Because if we had to do ballot measures, we need to be able to explain this, and then the ballot measures that are coming up, right? So that's where I'm at. Just help me understand better, so then I can be better supportive of this budget.
Absolutely. And we, I will do my best to help all of us understand better during my next presentation.
Thank you, Troy.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Right. Because we're just going to hear 100% increase. Oh, my goodness, it's 100% increase. So how can we justify this increase? Where is the negative at, and how are we going to, you know, make that into a positive? Show us, right, on charts. This is what we had in the past. This is what we have coming in now. And yes, it's going to be painful, but we have no income coming in, and sales tax is not enough. So that's where we, we have to go with that. Show us the data.
So we are going to have that in section eight, or number eight, this evening. That will be the topic. So that's kind of, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? And, and we understand that this is a little different than what it is in, been in the past. And then, you know, it's always finding that balance, because I think in the past, everybody goes, oh, my God, a three-inch binder with all these papers, and, you know, how do you get through all that? And then it changes, and then it changes, and then it changes. And then which section are you looking at, and which version? So, yeah, so, you know, it's trying to streamline and to do this in the-
Thank you, Mayor. Just, let me just finish. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I, I get that, and I appreciate the, the streamline and the efficiencies and effectiveness. The challenge is that comes at a cost of looking like it's lacking transparency. That's the challenge, right? And so that messaging, I have not been able to answer questions that I'm receiving from constituents. And I have questions myself. So I appreciate the new process. And it, because it's November, and we normally are talking about this in the summer, that's the challenge I have, is I don't have enough time to really get into this and understand it, so I can be able to answer questions.
So I would, I would just encourage that, that we have a robust conversation with lots of questions asked at the next work session. We've had two work sessions, and we've intended to, and we've provided the information. We set the stage. We provided some information. We do, there is detail in here about the budget numbers.
I guess we differ. I, I, I expect more detail. I want the numbers and how it balances out, and what's going into reserve. Like, I want the line items, not a summary that's 63 pages.
Okay. So, one second. Was Councilmember Worth out? Did you, you're good? Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm not jumping over councilmembers. So, did that, so we are having another budget work session on next week, so we can have more discussion, because this isn't finalized.
Will we have those line items by then?
We can, so what you have in your book is actually reproduced from the new financial system that shows summaries of collapsed line items by department and by fund. And, and so I can check with staff and see if we can provide more detail. That will be a lot more detail. We're happy, I'm happy to provide you with the three-inch binder that has all of the schedules.
Yes, please.
That doesn't have the accurate approvals on it yet.
But it shows the priorities of where you're, you're going. And that's what I need to see, so then I could better understand.
All right. We have that. We can email that to you. We can upload it onto the website to-
Yes, please.
Tomorrow.
Yes, please.
With the acknowledgement that it's not completely accurate, and it's very draft at this point.
It's showing the direction that you want to go, and that's what I need to see, because this does not help me understand what the problem is and what you're trying to solve.
Okay.
All right. One second, Councilmember Jefferson. Councilmember Gaby, did you have something that you wanted to say first? I want to give everyone some time. Hold on.
Troy, I think it would be beneficial if you took, everybody's saying 100%. When you 100% increase, it makes you feel a lot of money. So if you took an average rate payer, what they currently pay, and what the 100%, the 6% additional would look like. I think that would be more-
Yes. And, and that will be in the next presentation. It's $8.8.
So wait, so eight what now?
$8.8.
So when you say 100%, it makes you feel like it's like, I pay on the average $134 a month. So when you say 100%, I'm thinking, what, $2.60 a month? So if you break that down to that, I'm hearing everybody's hearing that, that 100% doesn't look as frightening as it's meant to be.
Yeah.
But Steve, it's $8.
And, and we will have that in the next presentation.
Yeah, we will have that presentation in eight. So we can have more discussion there. We want to get to the public hearing for this particular topic. So if we can hold the questions about utilities until that presentation, that would be helpful. So, Councilmember Jefferson and Councilmember Von Holtz?
Access to the working document, Mayor. I just, just wanted access to the working document somewhere that we can just dig in Saturday night at 8, 9 o'clock. That's what we want.
I like the way you think.
Yeah, it, it was one of those things. Do you give people information that's incorrect in the beginning, and then where, you know, what is useful? So, Council, yeah. Councilmember Von Holtz?
My comment probably goes for the next presentation, but let's not discount. That $8 is a lot to some people.
Mm-hmm. Yes. All right. Any other discussion on, before I open the public comment portion of our public hearing? All right. So with that, I am going to open up the public testimony portion of the public hearing on our, on the ordinance number O-2024-007, the 2025, 2026 proposed budget, finance, budget from the Financial Department. And so with that, please limit your comments to three minutes and please keep your testimony relevant to the subject of the public hearing. And I have the sign up. And is there anyone online who's signed up? No. No one is there. So, all right. So with that, I will have you come to the podium. Pamela Hansen, state your, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I think I'll take the full three minutes intentionally this time. Pamela Hansen, Post Office, Box 14521, Tumwater. I would like to first mention three words: deficit, efficiencies, overspending. Those are the three words that really pop out summarizing the conversation and the roundabout of the things that have happened in the past years, including the budget binder that I have. So I do have one of those three-inch binders. I do understand just about every page of that binder. And so I'll take you back in time again. Mayor Ralph Ausgood, Pete Kmet, and I, Mayor Pete Kmet and I, all three testified at the first comprehensive plan in Tumwater. We all went three different paths. Mayor Ralph Ausgood and I reported to the same person. Our direct report was the comptroller of the Washington State Department of Revenue. Over and over and over again, Ralph Ausgood went one way as the budget manager, I went the other way, scheduling meetings, data entry, learning everything, going to meetings with other department admins to manage the whole state of Washington Department of Revenue. Do I know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Okay. So, employee FTEs, there are people that have left, there's funding there. So there's the opportunity to double fill or bring in, and it, money can move there. It's just where is it going to move? How much was left? Where is it going to go to? Every month, a budget report should be brought in from every department. It shouldn't be way behind. I don't know how behind, behind is, but it shouldn't be. As a supervisor at the Department of Revenue, Property Tax Division, I had to take care of my stuff. I had to report to the Assistant Director. It goes all the way up. At one point, a U.S. West Communications Executive was our director of the Department of Revenue. How intense is that? So this budget conversation and not having anything but a summary, which shows an extra $2 million being transferred into the golf course, so the golf course isn't making its own way, taxpayers are still paying for that golf course, more than half million dollars a year, which was stated years ago, which it takes an effort to find that in that three-inch budget document, but I can point to it in the one that I have, it went from here to here. So I'm wondering now where the loan from the Transportation Fund went to the brewhouse and if that's paid off back to the Transportation Fund. I'm done.
Thank you. All right. Dave Nicandry.
Good to see you all again. Dave Nicandry, 505 Fourth Avenue, Southwest. In days of yore, when I was in the, on the council in the 1970s, we didn't do the budget until December. And I came tonight to speak at public comment because I thought I would be ahead of the curve only to find out it's late in the game. But be that as it may, I'm here tonight to offer some budget feedback on the present straightened circumstances of the Historic Preservation Commission. Grateful, Mayor, to get another reappointment from you. I thought about it long and hard, but I decided I'd stick in there. But I need to report, I think I can say with confidence that as a group, we're quite restive, because we have nothing to do, because we have no staff and no resources to work with. And that's perhaps bad enough in itself, what a community that builds itself, is Tumwater's first community or did at one point. We had indigenous testimony that this was the first settlement in this part of the, of the state, yet the city's Historic Preservation Board has nothing to work with. Mr. Denny repeatedly reminds us he has no staff, he has no time. So we either need to give him, we, through the, and through the force of the budget, or otherwise, move it to some department that has the time and the resources, or give Mr. Denny the time and resources to work with. It's truly a lost opportunity, because not only are things historic not getting done, you're, 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 you're not taking, not taking advantage, advantage of the talent on that commission. I can speak with some knowledgeability along these lines. We have the woman who's the head of a public broadcasting network. We have one of the most knowledgeable people in, in this state in terms of local history, who's equaled the level of, of formal understanding of the community's history that the late Jim Brown had. You had, you have a guy that used to be the head of the State Historical Society for a quarter of a century. The only time we're called together is when, quite honestly, the, through, I think Chuck's kind of put up to it, but we're only called together when you want the Historic Commission to engage in some dirty work, like picking out wallpaper because some bomb across the street from the brewmaster's house burns the place down. Or you decide, more astonishingly still, you want the Historic Preservation Commission to delist one of the principal historic assets in the community. This is just madness. And so, but we can disagree about whether, what should be done with the brewmaster's house or what should be done with that tree, but for goodness sake, give us some resources to work with or just disband the outfit. Do one or the other. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the budget? All right. With that, I will close the public testimony portion of this and remind council that we have a budget workshop on next Tuesday and that we will get more information out to you before then. So with that, we're going to now move into our next public hearing, and that is on the ordinance number O-2024-006, Ad Valorem Regular Property Tax for the fiscal year 2025. And again, we will have presentation from staff.
You can show it. I'll go ahead and talk because I won't refer to the slide for a couple of sentences.
Can you move the microphone down a little bit? There you go.
Better?
Yes, much better.
Oh, yes, I can hear myself. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight is the 2025 Property Tax Levy Ordinance for the City of Tumwater. The city's property tax levy is a very important source of revenue used to support the city's ongoing general government programs and public services. We have a requirement to respond to the Thurston County Assessor's Office by November 30th with an approved ordinance for the next year's levy request. Each year, the Thurston County Assessor's Office provides us with reassessed values on all existing properties, new construction amounts, and any annexations. We then use these values to estimate the city's annual property tax levy request. Cities are allowed by law to increase the levy each year either by 1% or by the implicit price deflator or the IPD, whichever is less. This year, the IPD is higher at 2.57. So with the IPD being higher, ordinance O-2024-006 establishes the City of Tumwater's property tax levy for fiscal year 2025 with an increase of 1% from the 2024 levy. The slide showing on the screen compares the 2024 levy to the proposed 2025 levy, and it demonstrates the 1% increase. The county assessor's office may still provide revised values up through November 30th, so the numbers may change slightly. But with the preliminary values, the most recent report shows an assessed value of $6.74 billion for the existing properties in Tumwater. The 1% increase over the 2024 levy is estimated at $11.78 million, which brings additional revenue of approximately $116,643. The most recent preliminary report also showed the 2024 new construction value estimated at 98.66, so not quite as high as it was in 2024. But this will bring an additional $183,300 of property tax revenue for 2025. There were no annexations in '24 or '25, so no additional revenue there. And the combined 2025 property tax levy, including the 1% increase plus the additional taxes from new construction, estimates the city's indirect, indirect tax rate per 1,000 of assessed value to be $1.80. Total revenue would be $12.1 million approximately. This ordinance is necessary to establish and certify the City of Tumwater's request for the 2025 property tax levy and indirect property tax rate as outlined. So tonight, we're presenting the property tax levy request as a public hearing and then asking to move the ordinance forward as a consent item for adoption at the November 19th council meeting.
All right. Any questions before I open up public testimony? All right. So with that, I will get the, there was, was there anyone online? No. All right.
Thank you once again. Pamela Hansen, Post Office, Box 14521, Tumwater. Okay. It would have been nice to have the, the slides in, in with this document, but I understand that there's already plenty of paperwork here. My question is, when I look at page, page 104 of the packet, it is the email from Shelley Carter, Assistant Finance Director, to City Council. I'm looking at Number 2, Paragraph 3, which basically says what she stated on the slides, going from $1.86 to an estimated rate of $1.80 for 2025. So that's the last sentence of Paragraph 3, Item 2 background. Then, Paragraph 4, which was not mentioned at all in the presentation, the last sentence of Paragraph 4 says, "When the final assessed value is determined by the Thurston County Assessor and Washington State Department of Revenue, the Finance Director may recertify the tax amount to meet the $3.10 limitation if necessary." So this is also reflected in the actual ordinance under the, whereas the City Council desires to limit the rate to $3.10 per $1,000 of assessed value plus administrative refunds, semicolon, and. So my question is, is that going to happen after? Is it limited after the ordinance so that there's still that leeway to go from $1.86 to $3.10, because that's quite a jump? I'm just trying to make it more transparent, because I have this in front of me and it wasn't on the slide. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I do not agree with that increase.
Great. Anyone else in the audience want to make public comment on this? That I'm closing the public comment portion of the public hearing? And I guess, just for clarity, since a question came up, can staff, no? Because I think it's two different things. Is that not true?
That's, that's some legal language in the statute that the, that the county puts out there. I do not have the authority to raise it from $1.80 to $3.10.
I, I didn't think so.
No.
Yeah. All right. So, any council comment, any comments or discussion on this? So the request was to put this on consent. Is council wanting to put it on the consent calendar for action at our next council meeting? Do we need a motion for that? I don't think we, okay, okay, yes. Sorry, I didn't have that part up. Sorry.
So I move ordinance number 02024-006, an ordinance relating to tax revenue of the general fund fixing the ad valorem of the regular property tax levy essential to pay expenditures of the City of Tumwater, Washington for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2025, to November 19th, 2024, consent agenda for adoption.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right. So now we are moving to council considerations, and I think this is the one everyone's looking forward to. So this one is on Resolution Number R2024-017, the 2025 fee schedule, and Finance Director Troy Nymer will be presenting. Go ahead, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So as Mayor Sullivan, Sullivan said, this is the 2025-
The microphone, for some reason, is-
Still not working?
Yeah.
I'll get really close.
There we go.
Okay. So this is for the 2025 fee resolution, and we're also going to talk about the utility, the proposed utility tax increase during this presentation.
Hold on a second. Councilmember-
Troy, just clarify when it says fee, so you're, this is fees and taxes. We're voting on tonight, it's just the fees, not taxes?
Correct. Tonight, we're only voting on the fees.
Thank you so much.
So I wanted to, so we, so, sneak preview of coming events. We, we discussed, along with the fee resolution, we did discuss the proposed utility tax increase at Public Works Committee, and then again at the budget, last budget workshop. But we wanted to be sure, because we, we knew there would be interest and comments on this, and so we wanted to bring this to the full council and, and run this by you. So they're, they're related, because it's a tax on the utility rates, on, on the utility bill, but they are not married. They're, so the, so tonight, you will only vote on the fee resolution, and if we decide to go forward with the utility tax increase, we will bring you a different ordinance to approve. So, thank you. Okay. So for the fee resolution, well, for this whole presentation, we're going to very briefly discuss the background, going to go over some highlights to the changes in the fee schedule, we're going to talk about our utility assistance programs, the utility rates, utility taxes, the comparison with our neighbors, and the final recommendation. So by way of background, the fee resolution is an annual process. We evaluate our, the fees that the city charges annual, on an annual basis. It affects every department within the city, and we generally prefer to have small incremental increases versus, you know, waiting five, 10 years and having really large utility rate or other fee increases. So jumping into some of the highlights, Table 1, not, not too many big changes. Biggest one was an inspection fee for a new location from $85 to $110. Many of these fees are just kind of small increases to, to keep up with the cost of doing business. Table 2 is an interesting one for the impact fees. The Tumwater School District impact fee, which we collect on their behalf and then remit to them, is a 2.4% increase. But the Olympia School District, because of the way the boundaries work, we do collect some, usually collect some, some impact fees for Olympia School District. They have suspended their impact fees this year due to declining enrollment. Sorry. They have, they have suspended them for 2025, not this year. In Table 3, building and fire safety, just some small increases to reflect current rates, and another, a certificate of occupancy for a business is going from 85 to 110. Table 4 for transportation and engineering, again, increasing some fees to reflect current rates or cost of doing business. again, increasing some fees to reflect current rates or cost of doing business. Connection charges for water going up 8.5% for sewer is 4%, and that's planned out in the CFP. You might remember the, this next fee in table five, this is for a third false alarm for a fire system. The first false alarm and second false alarm are free. The third is going from 393, we just instituted that fee last year, and going to 401 for 2025. And that is the recommendation of the Washington State Association of Fire Chiefs. In table four for recreation, we have youth baseball and basketball each going up $10. And we have a new table this year. So you might remember from last year, we added information in the fee schedule to talk about our utility assistance programs. However, we, after having them there, we kind of figured out they don't really stand out. So Bonnie in Water Resources came up with a great idea as we were working on this, to just make it its own table. And so we have a new table, table eight, and that talks about the Lifeline Program, which offers 50%, a 50% discount for low-income seniors and disabled folks who qualify. So that's a really great program. We also have the Tumwater Hardship Program, which is funded by community donations. And in addition to that, there still are state and federal programs that offer utility assistance. Stepping back to table seven for the utility rates, Lot is increasing fees by 3% on their portion of sewer, water, storm, and sewer, 6, 8, and 7% respectively. And wanted to point out for anyone that might not know, Water Resources and Sustainability is the department that manages the utilities. And they have been working with a consultant named Corolo, who's working on a 10-year rate study for the water utility. That same work will be able to be applied to sewer and storm as well. And those, the fees that we're recommending in this fee schedule are actually lower than Corolo recommended, but because the work wasn't completely done, we decided we didn't want to go quite that high yet. Let's not get too far out in front of ourselves. And so this is what WRS landed on. These fees would be used, these fee increases will be used to support additional staff, additional equipment, continued electrification of our fleet, long-term capital projects, urban forestry, and the Deschutes Estuary project.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, so for this slide, this would be an example where for me to understand better the 6, 7, 8% with that list, I appreciate that list, but what does that look like in term of a dollar amount? So then how did you come up with 6, 7, 8? Is this, was it, is it a five-year plan with a capital facilities plan? Is it a six-year plan? Then you take that number and divide it, and that's how you got 6 for every year? That's where I'm missing something of, why did you come, how did you come up with 6, 7, 8? Based on those elements, what is that total value of those?
I would not be able to effectively answer that for you. Mr. Dan Smith could speak to that better if he were here.
He just came on camera.
Oh, oh, there he is.
Thanks. Hi, Troy. Hey, Councilmember Dahlhoff, yes, those.
Dan, we can't hear you very well.
Can you hear me better now?
Hold on, we're trying to work on it here.
Okay, let me know when it's good.
It's really, really quiet. Hold on. All right, we have IT staff coming.
Okay, excellent.
But Troy, that goes back to my comment of, to help me better understand and feel confident answering, what does cost of business mean? What does current rate mean? A value, what that value is, how you broke it down for this biennium. That's what I would like to see. So in the document on page 109 in the packet, it talks about justification is included in the packet. I haven't seen the justification, so I guess the question is, what are the problems we're trying to solve? And what, why does that equate this? So if we're increasing this by this much, what are our customers getting in return? That's the disconnect I'm having, is the background why? Why is it that? Why is it 8.5? Why is it 4? Like, that's what I'm missing.
Okay, yeah, and if we can get Dan's voice.
Any, is it any better now?
Yeah, that's great, Dan.
So I can answer that question kind of in two ways. One, you know, when we do the long-term forecast, you know, we're looking at kind of the model for the, you know, as we're developing the CFP, and we're looking at operational aspects versus the capital aspects. You know, we're trying to balance the long-term kind of view with the capital projects that we have, making sure that we can retain our reserves. You know, our operational reserves as required by both city policy and best management practice for operation of utilities. Managing that through, you know, where the rate increases and they look on that horizon. And so, you know, really where this initial forecast is done, and it's been done for many years this way, we're looking at that long-term view. What does it take to make sure that we have enough operational, enough operational capital plus the reserves in line for that horizon? And so that's where we determine that initial 6% increase. As for the water utility in particular, but it also works for the other two utilities. As Troy noted, we're, you know, we're diving deeper into our water utility with the rate study with Corolo, and they're recommending a much bigger increase because of the significant capital projects that we have in place. But I, you know, really, you know, could not recommend that to you because one, that model is not done yet. We'll be bringing that hopefully forward with the next couple of months as we work through some of these details. So, you know, so one, that's not done. And two, looking at the model that we've been kind of using to forecast, you know, rate increases, you know, for the last, you know, 10 or plus, you know, years, is using that simplified model as we develop through the capital project or the capital facilities plan update annually. So I don't know if that specifically answers your question, but, you know, when we were looking at that, we're looking at what are the pieces that are causing these increases? It's inflation, so every year, regardless, we're always looking at a 2% to 3% increase just to match up with inflation. That's the increased costs that we're dealing with for electricity, power, equipment, those types of things. The increase for insurance personnel costs, that's that inflationary cost. And then the additional aspect is, what are, you know, where is the additional money? Is it new staffing? Is it, you know, different pieces of equipment that might be needed? The previous slide that Troy had on there documenting kind of what some of those elements were. Those are what goes into those conversations about how we're looking at that staff or looking at that rate increase, again, at that long-term vision as we're developing that capital plan.
Dan, I really appreciate that. I appreciate the list, and I also need to see like a graph of inflation is this much, staffing is this much, projects are this much. I need, for me, more transparency of the background and the work with Public Works to be in these elements for the public to see and for me to see of how much is what? How it equates to that? That's what I'm missing. Thank you.
All right, any other questions before? Councilmember Jefferson, hold on.
I have to agree with Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Hold on, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, I have to agree with Councilmember Dahlhoff because we want to see it. You know, show me the graphs, show me the data, show me the why. And now I would vote no because I can't see the why, honestly. So show me those graphs and just why do we need this? All right, so that's what the public needs to understand. Why do we need this? And why should we support this? You know, times are tight, money is tight. Show me the why.
Councilmember Agabi?
Well, I guess, but to my left and my right, the comments I hear are, were taken. So the 6, 7, and 8 is equals a 21 percentage point together. So is there planned capital improvement in terms of the water, sewer, and storm in the next five years? Because if you are talking about an increase beside our staff and inflation, there has to be tangible improvement or something that you're pointing to that this is where this way increase will go to. Do you have anything of such plan?
We do. I don't have it here tonight. Dan keeps a, more like a 10-year capital facilities plan. We also have in funds 303 and 304, the transportation capital facilities plan and the transportation CFP.
For each one of our utilities, we, you know, as Troy mentioned, we operate a 10-year capital plan, or 10-year, basically we have a water system plan, a comprehensive sewer plan, and a comprehensive stormwater plan. These outline the needs both from a labor perspective, a project perspective, capital perspective, and a programmatic nature of what we need. And we generally look out 10 to 30 years, depending on the utility and, you know, what the report is covering. But these were adopted, the last one was adopted in 2021, was our comprehensive water system plan. That outlined a fairly significant capital program as well as various programmatic needs that we have over the next, you know, 10 years that that plan will cover. Those translate into our capital, our CFP program. You know, so yes, these plans exist, these programs exist. Many of them are on our website. I'm happy to share the specific plans with you and go over any particular specific details that you might have for any one of the utilities.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
One more, thank you, Mayor. So that's what I would, so normally we'd have the budget, and each program would have that link to the capital facilities project, and would have the explanation of that increase. So that's what's missing, and that's why I feel disconnected. So the next meeting, can we have all these increases? What it's linked to? What percentage inflation, what percentage staffing, and those projects? Because that helps us realize all the elements that are happening and how they're all tied together. And so that's why it's confusing, because normally we would have the expanded programs that would explain that. And that's where I feel like I'm lost. So that's what I would like for the next meeting, is linking those.
Yeah, I think, if I may, Mayor. I think part of the issue is we've got multiple different actions that we are requesting of the council that are related to the budget. Every year, it's my understanding that we do a fee resolution. It's separate and it's related but separate, and that happens annually, and it typically happens on this timeframe. Every two years, we're adopting the biennial budget. I recognize that it's later than usual, it's still within a statutory timeframe, and we're, we have been unable to satisfy the information that, or the questions that you have about what that budget actually contains. We will continue to work on that. This particular resolution is related to the fees themselves, so.
Right, and the fees equate revenue, which is in the budget.
Understood. And so to the degree that we need to wait with this resolution to be adopted until after you feel more comfortable with the budget, that's totally fine.
I would like that. I'm a no right now.
Right, so we are under a statutory timeline for the budget adoption. The fee resolution needs to be also adopted before the end of the year, so we can implement them on January 1. But if it would make more sense, then we can absolutely make this fee resolution come after the budget, if that makes more sense. It will make more sense in terms of, you know, what are the things that are being proposed in each of the individual funds? And just to clarify, each of these funds is a separate enterprise or a business fund. It's required to be self-supporting. So everything that we are spending in the water fund is based on either regulatory needs, capital needs, staffing needs, maintenance needs, those types of things. And so we can definitely get into that in more detail at the next week's work session. And hopefully that will make some sense. I would like to ask Troy to continue so that you can have this in mind as you see the different schedules, for example, that you're going to get tomorrow night, or tomorrow after tonight's meeting. And then, and so that you can have that as context in terms of when we go into the budget workshop next week as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, Councilmember Swarthout?
One for Dan. So this year, we have the 6, 7, and 8 is our proposed increase. Next year, because we do this on an annual basis, next year perhaps it could be lower? Is that what, depending on how the numbers work out as far as what you're trying to achieve here?
Yeah, so again, kind of using that same format that we use to forecast what the rates needed to be, you know, to again ensure that we had enough operational capacity and reserves, you know, in place for each one of the utilities. Next year, as the CFP proposed, there's a, in water, it would be 5.5%. In storm, I believe that it all comes down for each one of the utilities by a half a percent, with maybe the exception of stormwater, which stays at 8% given the long-term needs for the Deschutes Estuary and the urban forestry program. But yes, so we do look at that again, you know, through that long-term view. My intention with the Corolo water rate study is to take the model that we're preparing for that, that would provide much more, I guess, visual graphic detail around what the forecast looks like. You know, a longer-term forecast around rates is to break that model from just the water utility and also utilize that one in more detail for the sewers and storm utilities as well. Kind of along those same lines, we're kicking off a sewer plan update this month. And by next year, we should have a consultant aboard to kind of redo that same level of work that we do for the water system plan, for the sewer, for sewer utility. And then in a few years down the road, we'll be redoing the storm plan. So all this same information will be kind of revisited, reviewed, you know, on a rotating basis as we do for each of the utilities. But yeah, next year, we are proposing a decrease for these three funds.
I do have another question. And I just quickly pulled up the capital facilities plan. So I was looking at the upgrades and the different things that have been proposed. So this is correlational, right, as far as the increases that we're looking at are, would relate to the capital facilities plan that we have, the updates? Because we do have, that's all very specific, and the improvements, the updates that you have, there's different programs here that, and so again, I'm just, I'm asking my question correctly, but it does correlate, right?
It does correlate. In some cases, you know, such as the stormwater utility, you know, we had to revisit which some of the projects were, which ones were, you know, might, you know, be a higher priority than others because, again, we had some additional, we have the kind of the adoption, so to speak, of the urban forestry program. That's not, that's not considered in the stormwater CFP. You know, so when we look at a rate increase, part of that is what kind of revenues do we need to help support a program like that? For the stormwater or for the Water Resources Department only? This is not necessarily, you know, something that we're speaking for, is like, you know, backlog for other departments or deferred maintenance in other departments. It's just how do we maintain and operate a program that Water Resources can operate for, like urban forestry? We have the long-term capital need for the Deschutes Estuary, as council has recently been discussing that one. So yeah, we kind of revisit these every year. We look at what these, you know, again, what the long-term financial projects or the financial status is of the utility. And again, the primary goal is to make sure that we may retain enough capital in the operation, and we have enough operational reserves, you know, that meets both regulatory and city policies. Which you can see on the bottom line of that capital program for each one of the utilities.
I was just looking at the financial plan for the water fund. And then on the very bottom page, it talks about the rate increase, and it shows the percent. So this year, yeah, 6%. And so it is forecasted out, so next year it could be 5.5, we're looking at 27, could be 5%. So it's on that capital, our financial plan for the water fund.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, that's a good document to look at as well, as far as, because you've listed, we've got 14 projects. Two of them are new, and as far as like $81 million worth of projects that we're looking at, trying to complete. And so I just, there's just information there that I just appreciate that is available.
And I think sort of in carrying on with the discussion of the timeline, so we annually do the fee increase, we biannually do a budget. But then the opposite year of the biennial budget, we're reviewing capital facilities plans and updating and adopting those. And there's a separate capital facilities fund for each of these, the three utility funds. There's the transportation CFP, and then the general government CFP. So they tend to be spread out and somewhat bifurcated. So I agree, and I understand how difficult it is to understand sometimes how it all works together. But you're absolutely right, those capital facilities plans have projected out the needs of the capital that have been identified, either because of community priorities or regulatory requirements, or, you know, the Deschutes Estuary is a real recent example of, that's a $7.9 million budget item over the course of the next several decades. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for that, so that gets wrapped into. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for that. So that gets wrapped into all of the planning that we do ahead of time. So.
Councilmember Alt hauser.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to thank you for that explanation, Lisa. I think that really helped me. Because the way that, I think this has been a little confusing for me personally, because we're talking about the budget, which is the operating fund or the general fund. And then we're also talking about fees, which are proprietary funds. And those are two very distinct things. And what's sort of helping me visualize that as I think through this is the budget is what we're going to buy in the future. And what we're determining the budget will be is we're determining what those expenditures are. And then as a group, we'll vote on whether we want, we want to adopt those expenditures or not. But with these things, we've already voted to determine what the expenditures are. We voted on the capital facility plan. We know what that's going to be. And so now we've already adopted what that budget effectively is by adopting the capital facility plan. And now we're adopting a financing measure to make sure we actually pay the bills for the commitments we've already established. Is that an accurate understanding of the delineation between these two discussions? Okay. Thank you.
Great. All right. You can continue.
Okay. All right. So we're going to back up a little bit and talk about general fund needs. And this is in anticipation of talking about the utility tax. And so when we started this budget, one of the questions asked by Administrator Parks was what does it take to run your department? Is that, you know, salaries for the non-reps, more people, more space, whatever that is? Let's figure that out and figure out what the needs are. And we talked about in the previous presentation, the needs are much larger than we have revenue. So going to our financial toolbox, one of the ways we can increase revenue, there are a few, a few limited ways. One of those is utility taxes, which is contemplated in this budget. So for some history, the city first instituted a utility tax in 1974, and it was 3%. In 1991, the city increased the utility tax to 6%. And since 1991, there have been no changes. And so it's been more than 30 years since we have increased the utility tax. And so the proposal was to increase, is to increase that an additional 6% up to 12. This would be on the, only on the Tom Water owned utilities, water, sewer, storm, not Puget Sound Energy or LeMay or any of those others. This would bring additional revenue to the city on an annual basis of $617,000 to help pay for the overwhelming amount of general fund needs. And the average, or the cost to the average customer would be $8.08. We'll go to, how do we compare to our neighbors? The city of Lacey is still at 6%. The city of Olympia is at 12.5%, and I think they've been there for a few years. And here is the comparison chart. The, so on the left, you've got the city of Tom Water. That didn't show up very good on the slide. Yes, the left is the city of Tom Water. So the 6% increase for the water fund amounts to $2.30. 7% on sewer is $1.62. The lot 3% is $1.38, and the storm 8% is $1.13. The increase in the utility tax is $8.08, which would increase the average utility bill by $14.51. That's still, and so a total, total amount for the average bill, $143.55. That still puts us $4.78 lower than Olympia in the middle, in the pink, and $7.65 below Lacey on the right. So as I stated earlier, the, to increase the utility tax, we do have to pass an ordinance. If the council decides to proceed with that, we can bring, at a future meeting, we can bring you back a, an ordinance on consent, on considerations, however you want it. And we've already had a lot of questions. Are there, are there any more?
Any other question?
Do you mind if I provide some, okay. So there's been lots of questions about why the 6% utility tax for the enterprise funds or the business funds, so the water, the sewer, the storm, and even the Gulf. We're only allowed to use funds that are generated by rates and fees in those funds for those utilities. We're allowed to loan ourselves, we're allowed to do inter-fund loans, for example, from the water fund if there's cash and we need to use it in the general fund, or we need to use it in the transportation fund for some sort of a capital project. We're allowed to do that as a loan from the water fund to the general fund, but we have to pay it back. So all of the rates and charges, so the 6% on water, the 7% on sewer, 8% on storm, all of those rate increases are directly attributable to the work that's getting done within those funds. The 6% utility tax is the one thing related to the water, sewer, and stormwater that can actually be utilized in the general fund. So it's a source of revenue to the general fund that allows us to make up the difference between the projected revenue and the projected expenses. So that is the why. The 6.8 million that Troy mentioned in the first presentation includes an assumption that we've been able to collect the $617,000 a year to the general fund, assuming that we have that ability at this point. So the draft budget assumes that we have that additional revenue. And still, we're at a $6.8 million deficit.
Councilmember Dahlha.
Thank you, Lisa. Now I'm getting confused, maybe because it's late. That $617,000 is from the 6, 7, 8%.
No.
That's from the taxes.
The 6%, the $617,000 that's generated by the additional 6% utility tax on the utility rates.
You're using that not for the utilities, but to meet a deficit.
We are specifically allowed to use the utility tax
Right.
in the general fund as a source of revenue. That's what the, that's what the city of Olympia uses their 12.5% for. That's what the utility tax is used for. The rates and fees that you pay are used in the utility. The legislature allows you to use the tax as a source of revenue for your general fund.
I get that. I'm not, I don't like that idea right now, just the temperature of our community. Have we done any community forums, any surveys of what our community thinks about that?
I don't, we have not. That's currently what we use our 6% utility tax for. The existing 6% utility tax that we currently cannot.
I'm not in favor of it going to 12%. That's where I'm at right now, because I don't understand the why, because I haven't seen the budget. So I guess if I see the budget, maybe it will become clearer to me what it's being used for. So I'll wait till the next meeting or tomorrow when we get that to see. I need that connection. I need that why, not just because we're going to use it to fill in holes. I need to know where that's going, because otherwise I'm a no.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that the $617,000 that's projected is, is helping to balance our budget in the general fund.
Got it. I don't want that on the backs of our constituents to do that. So that's where I'm at right now, until I see the budget and better understand.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess the next question is, this comes on the next council meeting. Do you want this on consent or do you want this on consideration?
Consideration for me.
Consideration.
So there's, there's two things. So my feeling from the council right now is, well, we wouldn't pass a utility tax tonight anyway. That would have to come back to another meeting with an ordinance. Sounds like that would probably go to considerations. In a, so that, I guess the question is tonight, or the recommendation for the fee schedule for today is, do we want to pass the fee schedule today or do you want to wait on that?
You want to pass a fee schedule? Yeah. One second. Councilmember Gage, what was that?
Does the fee schedule include the increase?
The fee schedule includes the increases to the utility rates.
Okay.
But it does not include the utility tax.
Okay.
All right. So we want to do the utility rates portion.
I guess so.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Councilmember Alt hauser.
Thanks, Mayor. And to sort of just add another bit to the discussion, like I'm very comfortable passing this tonight, just for the fee resolution, particularly because we've already voted on our capital facility plan. We've laid out what that plan is buying, and now we're essentially financing it. So with that, I will sort of modify the recommended action that we, and I move that we adopt Resolution R2024-017, updating the 2025 fee schedule as recommended by the Public Works Committee at the October 17, 2024 meeting, with the exception of the utility tax.
Yeah, I hear.
With the exception of that. As I said, as recommended, but without that.
It's not, it's this.
Oh, but we did recommend increasing. But this is okay?
But it's also in the packet. So it's confusing.
All right. I will restate. I move that we adopt Resolution R2024-017, updating 2025 fee schedule as recommended by the Public Works Committee at their October 17, 2024 meeting.
All right.
All second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Alt hauser, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Great. We got that passed. And then that is all of the items for a council consideration. Next is committee reports. And Councilmember Agabi for the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Thanks, Mayor. So for the Public Health and Safety Committee, our meeting is in the future on November 8, November 12. For that, our agenda includes a Tom Water Thurston County Prosecution Contract 2025/2026, then inter-local agreement with Olympia Park, with Olympia McNoble Retina Training Center, inter-local agreement with Olympia FP Care Program. And then for Resolution 2024-015, that was brought, is being brought forward. And that resolution is promoting civil rights and against it. Those are our agenda for November 12.
Great. General Government Committee, Councilmember Alt hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be meeting on November 13, and we have a robust agenda planned. We will be discussing our food system plan, yet another journey into the 2025 comp plan update. This time, we'll be talking about the conservation element. We'll also be going over some development code amendments, an amendment to our ILA regarding the Franz Anderson Development about some usages of funds. And finally, we'll also be discussing an ILA regarding accessory dwelling units.
Next is Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be meeting this Thursday on November 7, 8:00 a.m. And we have a number of items. We take quite a while to list everything that we're working on. Lots, acceptance of work. There's a lot of acceptance of work project for the work that's been done over the summer. So we're looking at quite a few things. And so I welcome you. So you learn a lot when you go to the Public Works meetings, you guys, at 8:00 in the morning. So just saying, invite you to join. Thank you.
Thank you. And no Budget and Finance Committee, because we're in the middle of the actual production of that. Next, we will have the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and I will start out with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to let you know that the forms and the documentation have been submitted to the federal government. And we expect to get approximately $86,000 back from the government from the Inflation Reduction Act for our clean vehicle purchases and EV charging infrastructure. Shout out to the team that worked on this, led by Alyssa Jones Wood, of course, but also lots of help from Shelley Carter, Davis Abbott, and Charlene Johansson. So kudos to the staff who are looking out for ways to bring in additional sources of revenue in these tight times. And that is a program, assuming the Inflation Reduction Act continues, that we will be able to continue to process those requests annually as we continue with those purchases. Secondly, demolition, demolition work began today on South Pacific. The first step is to deal with the asbestos remediation. And then the landowner will be moving into actually taking the structure itself down. The asbestos removal was a situation that they had not necessarily initially anticipated. So it took them a little bit longer to get through their permitting process and bonding requirements. We are beginning our recruitment for the Assistant City Administrator. If it hasn't started already, it will start shortly. That's good news for our brownfield redevelopment work, as well as the boards and commission work, particularly the work on the Equity Commission. And then lastly, I wanted to remind the council about the work session we've talked about, the budget work session next week. It is a hybrid session beginning at 6:00 p.m. It is, we hope you all can be here for that. Following up on that, the council meeting on November 19. We hope to have the second public hearing on the budget at that point in time. The 19th of November is also the Tom Water Metropolitan Parks District Annual Meeting. So you'll be provided with some information related to an audit engagement letter and some data sharing agreements with the state auditor's office, where required to do those annually, selection of officers of the board, and then a report from Chuck Denny about the expenditures for the year. And then we'll also need to do a public hearing on both the property tax levy for the Tom Water Metropolitan Parks District, as well as the proposed budget adoption process. We then have a work session on November 26. That will be a virtual work session. We do have some guests joining us from the Thurston Climate Action Team. So we're looking forward to hosting them. And then finally, the December 3 council is when we hope to complete our budgeting process in terms of adoption of the proposed budget. There's several other adoptions that are anticipated. And then what we anticipate to be our last council work session of the year, December 10. That is a joint Planning Commission meeting, work session that is also anticipated to be hybrid, I believe. So both of those will be on joint meetings with the Planning Commission on the comp plan updates, but then also looking at the annual work plan for the long-range planning staff for the 2025 work year. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. So for my report, I'm just kind of giving some highlights on some of the things. It's always interesting when you have three weeks between council meetings, how many things you can get fit in there. So I'm just doing some of the bigger things. On the 16th of October, I attended the Thurston County Elections Symposium. That was a very interesting topic. It talked a lot about security and all of the processes, homeland security and a bunch of others, FBI, others were doing presentations. It was a definitely a very informative thing in talking about how secure our elections are. On the 19th, I attended the ceremony at the Union Pioneer Cemetery. The Daughters of the American Revolution spent 500 hours cleaning all of the headstones at Union Pioneer Cemetery. That's where George Bush, Isabella Bush, all of the historic individuals are at. They did an amazing job. They're now going to be doing some restorations as they can on some items. And they did, I mean, 500 hours of very painstaking. They also did a thing called the Talking Headstone. So they went to the different areas, different headstones, and they gave the history of that, which is very interesting. So that was so popular that I'm getting a lot of requests of like, can we do that on an annual basis? Because it was very, very, very informative. Then on the 23rd, I went to the High Capacity Transportation Visioning Event, and Councilmember Swarthout was also there. That was an amazing event on trying to bring all of the leaders together from Sound Transit, Pacific Transit, intercity transit, other areas of how to meet the transportation needs and the reality of what rail and those kinds of things are going to be moving forward. Matter of fact, even the representative from, from Amtrak was there and talked about some things. And so there, there's a lot of discussion. It was very, very interesting. On the 25th, I went to the ICOR Change of Command for the Commanding General. On the 25th, I went to the ICOR Change of Command for the Commanding General. And so he is now, his next assignment is going to be, is going to be in Korea. And then I attended the Principals Emergency Fund Breakfast, and Councilmember Swarthout will give an update of that. That was an amazing event. And also, several other council members were there. I also went, on Wednesday, I always say tomorrow, but Wednesday, I will be attending Intercity Transit Authority Meeting. And then Monday, the 11th, is Veterans Day, and there is a Veterans Day event at the Capitol Campus. So those are just some of the things for this week. So since the last meeting. Next, we will do council reports. And why don't I start to my right and have Councilmember Von Holes start with council reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week was busy. Tuesday, like you said, we attended the Tom Water Emergency, Principals Emergency Fund, sorry, and that was a great event. And then that afternoon, both Councilmember Dahl Hoff and I attended the YMCA's Community Conversation. And that was completely different than what I thought it was going to be, but it was a great opportunity. Councilmember Dahl Hoff can tell you about her friend Ruth that she met. I also met a new Tom Water resident, Evan, and actually ran into another community member last night at dinner. So it was just, it really brought the community together, and I feel like those conversations, especially in times like these, are very important. And then on Saturday, Councilmember Dahl Hoff and I were at the Community Bazaar at a show cultural center, and we registered five new voters. And that's just a good reminder that tomorrow is Election Day, and there is still time to register to vote or turn in your ballots. And please do.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, at the EMSC meeting, the 2024 Comprehensive Plan was approved by the EMSC to move forward to stakeholders for review before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. The Eighth Unit Location and Contract, which we discussed two weeks ago, overview was approved by the EMSC. I wanted to, in a little detail, tell you about my Washington State Annual Prevention Summit that I went to on the 30th and the 31st of October in Seattle. This was my first time attending as a coalition member for Tom Water Hopes, because I wanted to know more about prevention efforts. Because investing in our youth now will be cheaper than when they become adults. So some highlights, there are two new prevention state initiatives were released, a free online tool from the University of Washington, and it's called Check-in With Yourself. It's for youth and young adults to practice taking time to assess their mental, emotional, and physical states. It helps with managing stress, and as you know, our youths are a little stressed today, and to prevent burnout. They reflect on their feelings, learn coping strategies, and improve their well-being. The tool is anonymous, and it can be assessed 24/7 on any device with an internet browser. www-checkinwaa.org is the website. So at the opening, we received a briefing from the National Director at the CDC, and he stated that Washington State is leading the way in the nation when it comes to prevention work in communities. The latest data shows a small decrease in drug overdose deaths after years of an upward trend. It was just a tiny decrease, and less than 4% of the deaths are not due to opioids. So there's a lot of opioid deaths out there. It's mostly fentanyl, now xylazine, which started on the East Coast and now overwhelming the West Coast. So who are these people dying? Young adults and vulnerable people. So a way to address it is what we've been doing in our community, meloxicillin and working with schools to educate young people. So different races have different outcomes. LGBTQIA+ kids and kids who experience bullying are most at risk. There is a direct connection. So prevention needs to start early for nicotine, alcohol, and marijuana use. And the vast majority of youth do not use substances. So we looked at the research, and it usually starts with toxic stress, instability in early life, houselessness, hunger, violence in the home, and lack of opportunities. So a question was asked, how can we think about how to help the unstable family and children? Support housing vouchers, support programs and nutrition assistance SNAP benefits? It all leads to less child abuse and happier, less-stressed kids going to school, ready to learn. Mom and dad are also less stressed, because the children have the ability to eat, and their bellies are full. Now, I have an update for Councilmember Dahl Hoff about T-Hopes connecting with other organizations. She's been asking in the past, how can Fest and Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force better connect and work together? Well, I am happy to say that I see movement ahead. There's a contract, it's pending between T-Hopes and Fest to support some of their programs to strengthen families and parents in programs. So yes, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the 24th of October, I had my one-on-one meeting with Michael K., the Director of EDC. And during our sit-down, he gave me a data that had a breakdown of businesses within Tom Water. So let me back up. Demographic-specific data of businesses and entities within Tom Water that has been helped by EDC or cooperation with EDC to bring businesses to Tom Water. And I believe, I don't know about 11, maybe 12, of those three are for sure going to be relocating or bringing businesses to Tom Water. So if you're familiar in the past, there's a Lafayette that owns a manufacturing business here in Tom Water. So he had moved to New York, and from New York, he went to Ghana, and then he's back to Tom Water to start a new business, or a Yea, or something like that. So that's positive. And then he and I discussed about Tom Water businesses, bringing people to Tom Water specific. And from that discussion, he showed me, he said he had a consultant in the city of Los Angeles, that's where he lives, who helped him to recruit business entity or people who are looking to bring businesses to Washington State, or specifically within Thurston County, PSN King. So for Tom Water, you wouldn't believe, one of the roadblocks is our Gofa issue. So I don't know how we solved that, but that is what we discussed for 30 minutes. And he did call one of the consultants in LA, because I wanted to be sure we do have a problem, a Gofa issue. So we need to do something about that. So that is my, well, so on the 30th of October, EDC have a retreat at the Gulf Club on Indian Summer, where I wasn't able to make it, because that would have been an extra for me, and it was on all the retreats. So I have another day job, so I didn't make it. So that's mine.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahl Hoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to connect Councilmember Jefferson's T-Hopes and that work with Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force Prevention Group. There's some strategies that we are identifying for moving forward for 2025, and I think it'd be an awesome opportunity to connect with Tom Water Hopes and the school district. We didn't have our annual meeting with the school district this year. So could that be a conversation for 2025? In that annual conversation with the school district, substance use with youth. So the strategies for the task force, one of them that's applicable is expand resources to local communities with an emphasis on peer education and youth-led substance use prevention work, which also could tie into the upcoming council, Youth Council, right? Youth-led for youth. And then another strategy is expand availability of fact-based drug education and information about harm reduction approaches to substance use for youth. So I think those two would be a great topic with Tom Water Hopes in the school district and the potential Youth Council moving forward for 2025. The other meeting I attended was Thurston County Fall/Winter Weather Briefing, which was really interesting. Noah was there and presented. They did some flood mapping, and then they talked about what to expect for from now into the beginning of the year. So they are predicting weak La Niña, and so that means wetter than average and cooler than average for us. So they had Public Works, they had Department of Transportation, they had Puget Sound Energy, all present of how they're preparing for rainfall, flooding, snow, ice, and the snowpack and the water supply. And that was really valuable information. Anyone like my slides, I'm happy to share that with you. And then Tom Water's Principal Emergency Fund, that was awesome. Councilmember Von Holes noted what we did together. And then Councilmember Swarthout and I, on Saturday, went to, there was an event with Tom Water Fire and Thurston County sheriffs, where there was a basketball game called Fire and Ice. And last year, there's no judgment, but Fire lost miserably, and it was embarrassing. It was embarrassing. This year, they won by one point. I was, my cortisol levels were rising. I felt my heart getting out of rhythm. It was amazing. I'm sorry, Commander Mason, that police lost. But the point is, Fire won, and it was amazing. And there's a lot of collective, and they raised over $7,000 for the Shop With A Cop and the Tom Water, getting youth coats. So win-win for everybody, and a great way to spend a Saturday evening at North Thurston High School. That's my update.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Alt-Hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Regional Housing Council meeting this past Wednesday, along with Councilmember Kathy. We had a pretty big agenda. We first opened things up to talk about Energize Thurston. That's pretty similar to the efforts that we're deploying here that should begin in January of next year in terms of the access to heat pumps for low-income families in our community, as well as the group buy for heat pumps who are interested but might not meet those income thresholds. So we got a briefing on that, sort of about the countywide effort at large. We also got a really interesting briefing on mold and moisture in housing, which is an incredibly pervasive issue, given our climate and given the average age of our housing stock, which is slightly older than some other communities, which those two things together kind of add up to damp conditions and ill-equipped housing, particularly for tenants who are renting out places that might be below market. So we had a briefing about if there was interest kind of at this regional level to talk about policies to where we could address mold and moisture in housing. And I expect that we'll be bringing that conversation back to the council as a whole to sort of gauge interest in engaging on that, engaging in a policy discussion in the future. We also renewed some of our advisory board members. I think that's noteworthy, just because our advisory boards are pretty new. They're a couple of years old. They were a deliberate effort for us to build in subject matter expertise into our decision-making process, and they've been incredibly helpful. They are just a wealth of knowledge and information and resources, and we are grateful for their participation in helping us make informed decisions about funding. We also got an update on the Franz Anderson Project. That was really about the ILA that we're going to discuss at the General Government Committee meeting next week. Finally, we just had sort of, we sort of patted ourselves on the back a little bit at the meeting, too. There was a ribbon cutting at Lotus Court in Olympia about three weeks ago, and I got to attend that. And that's just, you know, an incredible project. It's 61 units of permanently supportive housing, kind of sort of on the bridge between Olympia and Lacey, which is, took a couple of years to come to fruition and does not meet the need. But, you know, every little bit that we can embark upon helps. And so it's really good, I think, for us to take time to recognize the little victories so that we have that vigor and spirit to keep pushing forward. That was our meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the High Capacity Transportation Meeting on October 23, and did learn that the reason we don't have bus service to Black Hills High School is because they can't turn the bus around. So that was interesting. But we don't know those things until you talk to somebody who knows how this works. So something to resolve later. And then October 28, I had my Climate Mitigation Committee, and we discussed the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. So we'll be coming back to council with that, once that has been drafted. And then we also talked about the Energize Thurston Program update that we'll be adopting along the lines of what Olympia's done and Lacey's done, where you can receive rebates or financial assistance for upgrading your home with, from gas to electric appliances and utilities as well. And then on November 1, I had the TRPC meeting. And on that, we had, a lot of times we review things. The most significant thing that came out of that meeting was the Growth Management Act, the housing need allocations that they're doing the study. And it will help with our comp plan, as far as the number, they forecasted how many, it's a state requirement, a state law, that we have to look at income levels and determine the amount of housing that's needed per income. And so it was adjusted for the rural communities. And so there's a footnote in there for Tom Water as well, as far as having to deal with the Gopher Habitat. So I'm not sure if that'll be coming back. Brad will be talking to the general governor, and if that'll be coming back to us again, once the study's been adopted. So that was, and then we talked about the draft work plan for TRPC, and that was it. Oh, and the Principals Emergency Fund, thank you. That's my baby. So I really appreciate everyone that came, the staff. I really appreciate, we've had our fire and police and everyone, and all our staff people that come and support this. It's, last year, we spent $7,000 just on housing, keeping families in their houses. So it is an important, an important thing that we do, and so I just want to draw attention to that. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that now, we will be going into executive session. We all thought we were done for the night. No, we're not. So we are now going into executive session to discuss collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30.140/4B. And it's expected that the council be in executive session for 20 minutes. So we will be returning at 9:28. And we are not expected to take further action this evening after the executive session. So we will retire to the conference room, and all those in the audience does not need to stay for the end, but we will not take action. And then we will, so we are in recess at the moment. And then we will, so we are in recess at the moment.